Today is November ninth, 2021 at 6:00 PM. This is the Hanson Board of Selectmen meeting. This is being recorded and televised by Whitman-Hanson Cable Access. Please join with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Weeks, do you mind reading this week's announcements?
Not at all. All right, announcements. Holiday Festival is scheduled for December 4th from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM on the Hanson Green, and the fireworks display is scheduled for 7:00 PM. We're looking for citizens at large to become members of the newly revitalized Bylaws Review Committee. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website, www.hanson-ma.gov, or by calling the Selectmen's Office at 781-293-2131. Volunteers are also needed on the following committees: Bylaw Review Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, Conservation Commission, Cultural Council, Facebook Upkeep Committee, Highway Building Committee, Historical Commission, Memorial Day Patriotic Observance, Memorial Field Trustees, Parks and Fields Committee, and Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. We have upcoming meetings, Board of Selectmen, December 7th, 2021, at 6:00 PM.
Great, thank you very much. So, for new business, we have some great news that Tony DeFerris, our new town planner, has joined us, and we just have to do a couple of housekeeping items, which is to appoint Tony to the Old Colony Planning Council as a delegate.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Five oh. And Mr. Campbell, Mr. Joe Campbell, has been kind enough to fill in as a delegate, but he'll be stepping down for the alternate, alternate delegate. So could I have a motion to appoint Mr. Campbell to the Old Colony Planning as an alternate?
Seconded.
All right, moved and seconded, all in favor? Five oh. All right. So, new business, we have Ms. Fedorov here with us, who was kind enough to go and do some legwork on trying to find a suitable investigator to conduct the investigation on the zoning board of appeals. Ms. Fedorov.
Okay, great. So, I reached out to six or seven people, and unfortunately, the timing is such that a lot of, a lot of the people turned me down just first year, long before something was going on. But we were able to get two proposals. One is a local person, Jim Lampy. He is actually town council in Hall. He's the president of the MMLA Association, so that's the Mass Municipal Lawyers Association that all municipal lawyers belong to. And he does quite a bit of special counsel work for these reasons. It's open to ethics issues, where other town councils have conflicts, et cetera, et cetera. So he'll fill in and pinch-hit. And he sent along both his proposal, a letter regarding the scope of engagement, namely that he's going to do a full investigation, meet with the witnesses, review the documentation, et cetera, et cetera. And his proposal includes a $200 per hour hourly fee. I was able to secure a second proposal just today, so that's why I came to you guys' league. And it was a woman who was referred to me by one of the other people who I had contacted, who was too busy. And this woman used to be a member of the Ethics Commission itself. She's formerly an Assistant Attorney General. And prior to that, what did she do? It was some sort of other criminal, criminal-type legal work that she did prior to being an Assistant AJ. So she gave us a proposal for $250 an hour. She's also going to travel, she's not quite as local, she's more up on the North Shore, and of course, travel times also build at that rate. But she would also be, I think, a great candidate for this team, Campbell. So, I don't know if you have any thoughts or questions.
Ms. Campbell?
Recognizing the timeframe, but have we checked references for these people to make sure that they're capable of doing the tasks that we're asking them to undertake?
So, I know Jim Lampy, and I know him to be a very competent lawyer, having worked with him in the past. I didn't check resumes myself, to be honest. And Jean, she was referred to me by this judge, and she was formerly on the Ethics Commission. I also didn't check her references.
Now, Jean, is she an attorney? Okay, because she didn't sign Esquire, and her letterhead didn't say that either. I know we wouldn't be engaging her in that way, anyway. But I just was curious about that.
Yeah, she's formerly with the Attorney General's office.
Mr. Mitchell?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Kate, did either one of them give you any indication of timeframe or cost?
I told them that I needed this to be a fairly quick turnaround, so I said I'd like a month maximum, given that, you know, you'll have to arrange for interviews. I thought that was pretty fair. And hourly costs, neither one of them would give me a cap. I don't think Jim had mentioned that we see the proposal.
I didn't see any.
Is it possible to put a number, like a cap, so we don't?
Not to exceed?
Yeah, you know what I'm concerned about.
I do, I do know.
Or that if we get to that point, that they circle back, so we could at least have a, like a sanity check on, are we ducking, this is going to be another, you know?
I can absolutely do that. I can absolutely do that. And then, at a certain point, if they get to a certain cap, they can tell you who they've interviewed, what they've done so far, and this would be their anticipated course of action, so that you would have a better understanding of the total cost. But neither was able to give me a cap out of the box, because they didn't know how deeply their brand could dive, given that it sort of depends upon what people tell them.
Mr. Hickey?
But what would be the cap, if you're interested in a check-in piece?
I would go with your recommendation on what, you know, a fair cap is. I mean, $5,000, I don't know.
Yeah.
And I know it's a guess, but we just...
Seventy-five hundred would be a reasonable...
How much?
Seventy-five hundred.
In my mind, I thought I'd start getting a little anxious when we get to $10,000, like $10,000, you know, like I'd want to know, okay, what else have you got to? I'm not saying I'd say stop, but I'd want to know, what have you done so far? And what's the plan for finishing it up? That's where I'd get little heart palpitations, about $10,000. But that's just me. Other people feel a lower amount, I guess.
So you think, you think 10 or 75?
For me, like 75, I'm just thinking realistically, I mean, at $200 a pop, or the other ones, $250 a pop. I mean, Jim, you're our statistician here. I mean, that's not a lot of hours, you know?
At 7,500, it's 37 hours. It's really a lot of hours to work on this. I think it's, I think it would come in under the 7,500. I mean, as long as the billing is fair, if there's an interview, you know, set up for whatever, at 2:00, and, you know, he's, whichever person we go with, you know, starts billing us at 2:00.
Yeah, and for cost containment purposes, I thought that, for example, we could collect a lot of documents through town staff. So, for example, if we're looking for documents in the building department, we could contact Anne Marie and have her collect all the documents. And what you don't want to do is have an attorney come in and spin their wheels and say, "Okay, I need these documents," and then they're sitting there while everyone else is running around trying to collect the documents. So if we did that in advance, there would be some cost containment there. And what I told Jean was, since you would be coming from the North Shore, I said, "I would do my best to try to coordinate the interviews, so you could kill them, close them in one shot."
I agree with what you're saying, but I don't know how to say this diplomatically, because this is not, it's not really a strong suit of mine. I want to make sure that we're not unwittingly tainting the pot by collecting documents and, you know, because there are ways to stack the deck. And I'm not suggesting you would do that, or anybody in Town Hall, but I'm just trying, if we're going to do this, and we're going to pay the money to do it, I want to do it right. And I want to make sure, the whole purpose of us hiring a third party who's uninterested in this is to get an objective perspective on whether there is, in fact, a problem. And so, I just want to make sure that we are very careful about balancing that.
Agreed, but for example, what I was thinking with the building department records is, we pull, I mean, everyone knows what the investigation is about, so I'm not going to disclose anything here. But we pull every single building permit or electrical permit by the two members of the ZBA who perform that work. So, and that wouldn't, I don't think that taints anything, it's just what records are on file here in the town of Hanson. That's what's in the scope of our ability to get. In terms of the residency, I don't know. I know there are people who have documentation and complaints that have been filed, so obviously, those things would be provided automatically, anyway. So...
And I guess, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I've got so many questions. You know, and I'm struggling with, have we defined the scope of this investigation? Are we all clear on what we are looking for, so that we are clear with the person we're hiring, what we're looking for? I don't want there to be a misunderstanding that costs us money and lands us in a place where we don't end up getting the information we need. And so, what triggered me to just go on that little diatribe was when you're saying, "Well, we'll look at Hanson." I recognize, certainly, the permits and the work done in Hanson are important, but I don't think you're suggesting that if people are doing work with each other outside of the town of Hanson, that that still doesn't present a conflict.
Right, I'm not suggesting any of that. I'm suggesting what's in the control of me and you.
Okay.
So, since we don't control, and what's the next town over, someone in Whitman, for example, we don't, we can't go to the building department there and say, "Hey, by the way, Joe Blow, get me these records." I mean, we would have to do a public records request.
Yeah, right.
I do have a few questions, Mr. Chair. Kate, one thing that I read in that you said was witnesses. I found that very peculiar, because I didn't think there would be witnesses. But I guess those would be the people that actually filed the complaints.
Interviewees, we could call it.
Okay.
That's just my, me putting on my lawyer hat and thinking of people in the witness box. But there would be interviewees, persons being interviewed. So both the persons of interest, namely the members of the zoning board, the complainants, at least if, to the extent that, I don't control the investigator. The investigator would decide what he or she needs. So, I don't know if the investigator would believe that the complaint in and of itself was sufficient from the complainant. Maybe she would like to talk to the complainant. I would, if I were the investigator, frankly. But, you know, that's really up to that person to dictate.
Okay. I've been through one of these.
Yeah.
And during the, I was interviewed, and the town administrator sat in on my interview, which made me think that he sat in on all of them.
Okay.
And, you know, and this wouldn't go against Lisa, but if it does take 37 hours and $7,500, Lisa does not have the time to do this.
Yeah, so, I'm not sure why the town administrator, so I've done a bunch of investigations, luckily, not for Hanson, but, and as the investigator, I, I wouldn't want that, to be honest. I think it's distracting, and I think you actually don't get as candid answers as you might if, so it wouldn't be my preference, anyway.
I also think it puts Lisa in a very weird political position, and it distracts from the time that she's got. And we already know we're, you know, on a wing and a prayer with staffing. So I just think for a variety, I agree.
I would feel that I wouldn't be involved.
So then, basically, Jim or Jean would do it by themselves?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. I just, you know, and the town administrator, at that time, never spoke a word, the whole time.
Yeah.
I guess my other opinion would be that although Jean knows ethics, Jim actually works for the town of Hall.
Yeah.
So, he would be up to date on municipal stuff.
Yeah, so that's certainly Jean's line, she said it to me directly. "I know nothing about municipal law, zero. I know about ethics." And Jim, on the other hand, obviously, as town council, deals with ethics issues on a routine basis, he also does special counsel work that way, and he does know municipal law. He does labor employment, and he does land use.
And his office is in Hangum?
Yeah.
Which, okay.
Ms. Campbell?
I noticed that in Jean's piece, and I'm not sure if Mr. Lampy put it, but they specifically called out Cushing, Perkins, and Buckley. This board voted to investigate all members.
Yeah, and I could clarify that with them. I mentioned that them when I was talking to both Jean and Jim, because frankly, they were the hotter, hotter top, I guess, Jean, Billy, Kevin, and Sean. But the other two, and frankly, isn't this awful, I mean, even lacking in their names?
Joshua Paradi and Joanne Menudie.
Menudie, yeah. I could include that, that's my question.
Just a quick question. So, Kate, for the record, what would your role be in this investigation? Just hiring the investigator?
Yeah.
And then bring in the information to us once the conclusion is done?
And I would do that, to be honest. Once the report is written, either Jim or Jean would come in and present their findings to you. And then, remember, they're, they're serving as an investigator for you, so I could give you advice, or walk you through the process, if we were to do a hearing, or whatever, whatever was necessary following the investigation based on his or her findings.
Right, okay. So, you know, obviously, if there was clear violations, and the board would have to address that at that time, what about if there is no violations, and the investigator says, "These guys are squeaky clean," is the investigator going to stand up here and tell everybody that?
Yeah, yeah, so that would be the...
Because I think that's only fair if that is the case.
I find insufficient credible evidence to find, I think this is how you tend to word these things, insufficient credible evidence to find that there was an ethics violation by Bill Cushing, or whatever. So that would be the conclusion.
Just a procedural question. So, I know if, so let's play it forward. We have the investigation, the investigator presents what their findings are. At what point are we talking about a hearing? Like, is the, is the presentation of the investigation the hearing? And are we going to have everybody, like, how does that all play out?
So, because this is a board decision, what I would suggest is that report comes to you as the board, and then you, as the board, decide whether or not you want to convene a hearing. So if there's a finding of a violation, then you have to decide, is it a violation that warrants a removal process? Maybe, maybe not. Even violations do happen that don't warrant removal. Violations happen that really warrant removal. Sometimes there are no violations. So you kind of would have to assess that, I think, after you hear his or her report.
That makes sense, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on, I think Joe had something.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Weeks?
I just, just, again, this is a procedural thing for me. So I just want to make sure, and I caught what Laura had brought up, but I saw a second piece here. So how many people did we reach out to?
So, I reached out to Dave Jenkins of Coleman and Page. I reached out to Blair Donan of Kushner, who's a municipal lawyer. I'm blanking on his name, I'm so sorry.
That's fine.
I reached out to Jack Dolan of Lighthouse Legal, a student, B.J. Law. I reached out to Mike Mix, who recommended some of the same people that I had reached out to. I reached out to, who else?
That's fine, that's good enough. I just, just curious, that it was just more than, like, one or two people?
Yeah.
And then, so reaching out to these folks, the Jean one kind of caught my eye, so... Because I just want to be clear, because it goes back to the same thing. I just want to make sure that we're not inadvertently going down a path that we're not supposed to. It calls out three people specifically, when it's supposed to be everyone. So I want to make sure that, again, I caught that the very first thing, so I'm glad you brought it up. Second thing, though, it says, "This letter sets forth the terms of engagement with respect to an independent investigation of possible conflicts of interest held by certain board members of the Board of Appeals with respect to a pending 40B application."
Yeah.
It's the same type of thing. It's the same thing, where we're talking about something completely different.
We don't want to even hear about the 40B.
You know, I'm really, one of the things I'm concerned about is, again, going back to this, this idea of getting sued, and the potential for setting us up for failure as a town. And it's, it's not. So when we're talking about this, I just want to make sure that whoever we're reaching out to, whether it's James, Jean, or anybody else on that list, this one's kind of concerning to me, because it still seems like the conversation from a third party who has no idea what's going on here, somehow 40B got pulled into it again. And I just, and I want to make sure that whatever investigation we're doing is not something that it's not supposed to be.
So just be mindful, too, that part of the reason, if there's a potential conflict because of relationships among parties, part of the reason that the conflict would be implicated is if, or due to the fact that there's a pending application, regardless of what, could be a variance for a porch in the setback.
Yep.
Something no one cares about, right?
Yeah.
It could be something very controversial, a nuclear power plant.
Yeah.
But by virtue of the fact that there was an application pending before the board, and then the board members take action, that's the trigger, right? I mean, you can have friends, you can have relationships, you can be on the same board together and never, and be completely intertwin, and not have a conflict. The trigger is when the applications and the board takes action on an application before them, when a conflict exists. That's when the conflict of interest issues arise.
Yeah.
So, I get your point, that it could be an application from a year ago, or a future application. And I will make that clear, and I will have them revise the letter to indicate that it's by virtue of their actions as board members acting on any application.
Yeah, I mean, and I do appreciate the clarification. I just feel compelled to say it publicly, because I don't want it to get misconstrued if it ever goes down that road, that somehow this was about a 40B project. A, it's not. B, you have a good point in that, but for me, it comes back to the, the town meeting warrant, and the lack of faith that the townspeople had unanimously to have an investigation that this board never took on. So, it's not about that, it's about faith in the board, which may or may not have to do with a 40B, but for me, it has to do with a warrant article that the townspeople put in. In addition to that, it has to do with disclosures before people were appointed, which has nothing to do with a 40B. So I just want to be clear, just publicly saying this, 40Bs last on my list of things. It's everything else having to do with it. That might be one of the things on the list, but that is a box that needs to get checked.
Understood.
So it's just, with all the talks of potential suits and all these other things, I just think it needs to be said kind of out loud.
And I will have that sort of clarified with the members to choose, and they would reaffirm that to you in writing.
Yeah, okay. So if we're doing a, you know, when it comes to the process, and I defer to, obviously, the rest of the board for these, for these things, but, you know, I just, whenever, whenever, whoever we hire, I think the idea would be, we have to give a list of what it is that we actually want them to investigate, because that, this one sentence solidifies it to me, that we have to make sure we're very clear, that it's a larger scope. And it's not three people, it's the board, as we voted on. So, yeah, other than that, it doesn't, for me, it doesn't matter which one we choose.
Mr. Chair, I just have one more question, and I know the gentleman in the back had his hand up earlier, so if you would allow him to ask his question after me.
Sure.
Joe and Laura both made a great point. The board did vote to investigate the entire board. But as far as I know, Kate, there were only complaints made against two members. So, would the other members, even though they will be investigated as a whole, just like the witnesses, they would, anybody that goes to see the investigator is going to be, for now, known as an interviewee? Whether it's a member of the zoning board, or a witness, they're all interviewees?
That's true.
Okay. So we will have all five, but, again, I just want to remind everyone, and we voted for all five, and I agree with that, but there were only complaints put in on two of the members.
As far as I know, as far as I know.
But what the investigator will look for is what you just spoke about with any of the five?
Yes.
Okay.
I think the investigator will look for whatever we want them to look for. And remember that the investigator's not the judge, jury, or the appointing authority. So we still have to have a hearing, and even if they say, I'm just, I'm just speaking, like, just extremes. Even if they say, "Everything's squeaky clean, there's no harm here," that doesn't mean that we, we still can't remove them, that it means nothing. And they could say, "Hey, this is completely terrible, they're all incredibly unethical." We could still keep them all here. So, the investigation, again, we don't even need to have an investigation. We can do it right now if we wanted to. The investigation is to collect information for us to make an informed decision. So the investigation and the hearing are two completely separate things.
I'm sorry, I know Mr. Costas has been waiting, I just have one.
Yep.
So, I think what I'm, like, I'm hearing tonight is, are we clear? It's all five people, okay? And what are we asking them to investigate? We, in my mind, we're, we're asking to investigate, were proper disclosures made when people were appointed, okay? Because if not, then we were appointing a fictitious person. If they're, if you don't disclose, then we don't know who the heck you are when we're appointing you. And, and...
Disclosures...
Prior to being appointed.
Prior to being appointed, but under what, because, so for, the reason why I'm probing is because there are disclosures that you're required to make under 268A, the Conflict of Interest Law. And they, they may or may not, I'm not saying which way, be required to be disclosed upon a point...
Okay, I'll be specific then. I'd like to know whether any of these people do business together, and whether they disclose that, whether there are familial relationships, and whether those were disclosed when they were appointed, and whether there's any other thing that they may be involved in that would potentially cause them to have to recuse themselves, that they should have. For instance, you know, I, I'm making this up, this is completely, but I, I am a landscaper for the cemetery, and I'm also on ZBA, and the cemetery has some ZBA thing that comes before me, and, you know, and I don't say, "Wait a minute, you know, I've done work for those guys, I've got a relationship." So, work, conflicts with one another, working together, either corporations, or I've been doing work with this person, so I've got a financial interest...
Yeah.
...which would cause me to not be impartial. I've got a familial interest, which, you know, we know what that is. And then any other kind of, like, third-party thing that they should probably...
But I guess maybe I should be more clear, because, for example, if I were a member of your zoning board, and you were, you know, asking me to be a member of your zoning board, and I wanted to accept, and I came to and I accepted the appointment, I wouldn't necessarily disclose, for example, who my mom is, or something like that.
I'm not saying, yeah.
But then, my mom comes before the zoning board, and she wants a deck, and she needs a variance. At that point, that's what would trigger the disclosure.
Of course, I'm not asking them to be fortune tellers, and look into the future, and...
No, 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 that's what I'm meaning. So, you're, you're asking whether or not disclosures were filed timely in accordance with the requirements of 268A?
At the point at which they should have been made. So either, as I'm being appointed, there are things I could reasonably anticipate, may, may present a conflict, and I... may, may present a conflict, and I know I should probably disclose those, and then, to your example of the mother, as those things may happen, I recuse myself and/or I disclose and, and file with the appointing authority.
Yeah.
And so that, so those, that's one lens, so just the disclosure lens.
Yeah.
And then, I think the elephant in the room is the quid pro quo, or I'm working with somebody and I have financial interests, you know, and, you know, or we've got somebody that we use in common, for instance, an engineer, that we may all use, and that engineer is coming before the Board, that type of thing.
Yeah.
Where a reasonable person would say, gee, there seem to be a lot of connectivity issues here amongst these people, are they recusing, is there an issue? I'd really like to see some probing, I know you said that they would pull like the building, you know, permits and that type of stuff. I, it's gonna have to, the net is gonna have to be cast beyond just Hanson. I don't know how far, but, you know, as far as that level of type of thing, because I don't know how else we would-
And I'm gonna interrupt you here just one more, cuz you mentioned, for example, the engineer or whatever. I mean, let's be honest, all these complaints are now public, so the issues are really, there's an application before the Board, members are accused of being related to the applicant, who's also a Board member, right? So that's familial relationships.
Yes.
The members are, are accused of having financial ties that would create a Section 19, a financial relationship creating a Section 19 conflict, okay? So familial in Section 19. Then, cuz if we start going into like, well, if an engineer came before the Board, I mean, then you're talking like lots of money, cuz then you're trying to search for needle in the haystack. We know what the issues are. It's whether or not Bill Cushing is related to either Sean, Kevin, the other-
Joey S.
Gosh.
Are they related?
Right.
And if so, were proper disclosures filed? And if not, what prop, what disclosures-
Did they recuse?
Should have been filed?
Yeah.
And-
And then, is, are they, yeah, yes.
And then the same thing with the financial relationships, that's really what we're talking about.
Are there corporate-
And then whether or not Bill Cushing is a resident of Hanson.
Again, I'm not men, I'm not mentioning specific names at all, I'm just, cuz this, this is, this is an equal opportunity employer, because what we had discussed, yes, I know you're right, Jim, that only a couple people were mentioned in the complaints.
Yeah.
But shame on us, if we got to a year from now, or two years from now, and we have, were given this opportunity to just do an investigation, and we said, you know what, we didn't get complaints on those two people, so, and, and I don't know any of these people, they, you know, I'm looking forward to the results of the investigation and putting this to bed.
Yeah, yeah, nor do I, I don't know anyone, obviously, I keep forgetting some people's names, so, so, but that's really, cuz if we start going into, well, do you have relationships with anyone else who may have come before the Board, I mean, then you're talking about-
No, but do they have companies together, do they do business together, like, yes, yes.
Any relationships between these members?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanna be clear, all right.
I just wanted to take Mr. Constantine, Mr. Constantine, correct?
Yes, sir.
Do you mind just stating your name and your address, just for the record?
No, not at all. My name is Tom Constantine, I live on Brook Street. I was a state police officer for 23 years, and I've done multiple scores and scores of criminal investigations, and I was somewhat puzzled by the able town council when she said she could only locate two or three folks that would take this job on. I know of multiple retired state police officers that have investigative agencies, mostly in Boston, but all, stretching all the way to Plymouth. I'd like to remind everybody that when you do a comprehensive criminal investigation or an investigation, it's not superficial, you start to dig, and you start to look, and when people become invasive, which they may or may not, you dig into certain areas, so it could go on for a while, and if you get away for $7,500, you're getting away, like, I suspect it would go a little above that. Another thing is that, has anybody thought about, including town council, that what happens if one of these people, you approach them, and they said, "I've talked to my, my own council, and he advises me not to utter a word about this. I don't know where you people intend to go with this afterwards, when you get two or three people or everyone that says, on the advice of council, we, we're not gonna speak to anybody." It's something to think about.
That's a valid point, yeah.
Because that might, you might be very well, well, what do we do now? So it's something to think about. But, as, I, I don't, I don't, and I don't even wanna ask, it's something that you folks are gonna deal with town council, apparently she's gonna hire one or two people that she's already done a business with, is that correct? They're associates of yours?
No, they're not associates of mine, I, in the circle of municipal lawyers, I have worked-
I understand that, all attorneys know each other.
Yeah, yeah, but they're not-
District courts and Superior Courts.
Right, they're, Mr. Lampy has no economic relationship with me in the slightest, so we just know each other through municipal law circles. He's town council in Hope, and I'm town council in several towns across the state. Jean Kethorn was recommended to me by a former judge, who was recommended, the judge was recommended to me by someone in my office, because he worked for the Ethics Commission. The judge had declined to take or to present an offer to the Board, because he's retired and does investigative work and ADR work in his retirement, but felt like this was too big of a job and too far travel for me. So he introduced me, connected me with Jean Kethorn, who's a former assistant AG, and then sat on the Ethics Commission, so her expertise seemed appropriate to me under the circumstances.
So these are people in their 40s and 50s who have years and years of investigative experience?
Well, I think they're all-
Mr. Constantine.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just curious as to exactly who's gonna be doing this, rather than, than as Mrs. Kemet, Ms. Kemet, has offered, that, who are we getting, and what are they gonna be asking? Because the investigation may go a lot further than people understand. I mean, you're not gonna just do the past two years, they're gonna, an able investigator's gonna go back maybe even 10 years, and find out what these people, what they've been doing with themselves the past 10 years. It's, it gets deep, but anyway.
Sure, nope, absolutely, thank you. So with that being said, Mr. Mitchell, you had a motion.
Yep, I'd like to make a motion to hire James Lampier, sorry about the name.
Lampy.
Lampy, to do the investigation on the ZBA members with a cap of $7,500. Second.
Made and seconded, any discussion?
Just one more discussion piece before, are we, are we writing down now what we're asking them to investigate?
Yep, Kate had taken notes.
Cuz I got more, that's why I'm asking.
Okay.
Yeah, so, before we close the book on the vote, and then we move on to something else, voting records, you know, was it done in accordance? I wanna know, again, it goes back to-
Voting records, meaning election voting, or voting as a ZBA member?
No, it's a good clarifying question, voting as a ZBA member. What I mean specifically is, were they even eligible to vote with their reconfiguration over the past three times, going back, I wanna say probably three to six years? I wanna know-
So the reorganization of-
Yeah, it's hard to follow it, cuz even our website, two, two to three months' worth of recordings went missing, and I still don't know where they are. So I wanna know where those are, how, how the, August 5th, I think, is jumping out in my head right now, as a certain set of minutes, that I'd like to add to the list, I wanna know why they're different than everybody else's that surround that time.
You mean, written in a different manner?
Written completely different.
Yeah.
Completely separate.
The minutes are different.
The style is completely different.
Style is different, that's the one that was-
Compared to July.
Every other minute, really.
Literally every single one, go back as far as you want.
Okay.
I wanna know why, and, you already talked about residency.
Just to go down a little on the reorganization, so, there was some strangeness around the Board feeling a bit empowered to appoint people as an alternate or a full member, not maybe understanding that it was-
Yeah.
This Board that does that, and so I think you, that's part of what you, along with the rest of the reorganization.
I'm not even biasing it, I'm just, I just wanna, I want them to look into it.
I know, yeah.
That's it, I'm not putting anything on that beyond that, I just wanna see, can you look into those things, or have that person look into those things and be able to report back.
All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor? Five oh.
And could we get a summary from Kate that, that we all approve, to make sure that all of the things we just talked about are going to be in the scope of what we're requesting?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen, I saw your hand, sorry.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure with, you know, when everyone's following proper procedure and whatnot, that there's no conflicts on the Board of Selectmen that have done any of the past projects with, with some of the ZBA members as well, and if so, that they would recuse themselves before taking a vote.
Can I go first?
Sure.
I wanted to disclose that Kevin Perkins, I coached him in baseball between the ages of nine and 12, okay? So that's the only time that I was with Kevin Perkins, although I did coach his brother Tom in football.
It wasn't meant to be like a joke.
No, Kevin, I-
No, I'm not joking, that's, I'm not an electrician, I'm a truck driver.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I just wanna make sure that proper-
Sure, so if there's any, if there's any disclaimers that the Board has to file, please, disclosures, so please do so. With that being said, we have 15 minutes to get through the rest of this agenda and get through executive session, so moving on, I am looking for a vote to appoint Town Administrator Lisa Green as the town authorized representative, to authorize, finalize, and submit on behalf of the town any such ARPA, which is the American Recovery Program, it's the federal, federal funds for COVID, grant application to make, to make all representations and certifications required to be made on behalf of the town, to complete each application with such approval of representations and certifications, to be evidenced by signature of the Town Administrator Lisa Green, as authorized by the representative on such application, and if such ARPA grant is awarded, the Town Administrator Lisa Green shall be the recipient of such grant on the behalf of the town.
So moved.
Moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Five oh.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I have, I just wanna talk just briefly about Parks and Fields, I have three members of Parks and Fields that submitted their resignations, and I just wanted to recognize them for their hard work and many years of service. One is Rob O'Brien, Charlie Barons, and Eric Olson.
Yep, so we initially had it on our draft, and for whatever reason, it must have dropped off, so thank you for bringing it to attention. So I have a motion, well, I have a motion, do I have a second?
With regret.
With regret. All in favor? Five oh.
Favor, can we, do we know why everybody dropped off? That was what, two last time, three this time? Do we know why they're gone?
In their letters, they didn't really specify, from my understanding of it, well, Mr. Mitchell, you're on the committee.
Yeah, I think that it was just, they just thought it was time for new blood, they didn't necessarily like everything that was going on, on a couple of articles at town meeting, and they just thought that it was best that they move forward and get some new blood in, basically.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
So with that being said, we took our vote.
Moved in second.
Moved in second, thank you for keeping me honest, all in favor? Five oh. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. I'm also looking for a motion to appoint Charlie Baker, not the governor, as town custodian and maintenance technician effective November 22nd, 2021, subject to successful background check and procedures, and I believe he had disclosures in our packet, is that correct, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay.
So Mr. Baker, and he has been doing this for quite a while, he currently cleans the police station on the weekends and in the evenings outside of town hall hours as COP detailing, so he wanted to make sure he disclosed that. He did talk with Ethics, the attorney of the day, who directed him to file the disclosures, he's got, he did file the disclosure with the town clerk, and filed the disclosure with the Board of Selectmen, which does show, there's a spot in the Selectmen for it to be signed, so he is disclosing that, and he is aware that none of the COP detailing can happen within hours he is supposed to be at town hall.
So he, is he working full-time?
He's, he will be full-time.
Okay, all right, so-
Yes.
Yeah, I, I've met him, he's, he does a fantastic job, and Chief Mix speaks very highly of him, so, so moved.
Moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Five oh. I'm looking for a vote to appoint Julian Tully to the position of the administrative assistant, administrative assistant to the Town Planner and Planning Board, subject to a successful background check procedures.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Five oh. And I'm looking for a motion to appoint Robert Leshale.
Leshale.
Let's, Leshan Shale, to the position of highway heavy equipment operator, subject to a successful background check procedures.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Five oh. And I am looking to, for a vote to appoint Lucia Silveira to the position of Executive Assistant to the Board of Selectmen, subject to a successful background check, successful background check procedures. I'll just give a quick update, Lisa and I held interviews today, we were very impressed with Ms. Silveira's experience with municipal government, and seeing how we're not meeting till December 7th, we wanted to make sure that we moved this forward. So I'm looking for a motion.
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
When does she start?
No, I mean, I'm, I appreciate the sense of urgency and everything, but it does occur to me that in the past, we've always all decided who the executive system would be, because we're all gonna be working with them, but that said, given the timing, I'm okay with it, I'm just gonna go with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Weeks?
Al, go for it, it's fine.
Mr. Perkins?
Yeah, excuse me, Mr. Baker, should we meet upstairs, or should we-
We should be done, um, yep, we should be done with public session in just a minute.
Okay.
We should be done, yep, we should be done within 10 minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So all in favor? Five oh? Okay. And I have, I'm looking for a motion for a one-day liquor license printed on the agenda.
I'm sorry, so, is Mr. Kelly not?
Second.
He was on one agenda, and then-
Yeah, we polled, yep, we had to poll him for right now.
Okay, okay.
Yep, sorry.
All right.
Thank you. So-
Moved in and seconded on their liquor license.
Moved and seconded for a one-day liquor license, all in favor? All right, five oh. Town administrators report, real quick, do you have anything to report out?
I just wanted to update that we are still, you know, we are actively going through the minutes and identifying minutes that are still missing, getting them generated, getting them before the Board when we do get them, getting them approved and getting them posted on the site. The town clerk and the assistant town clerk have been helping me put that together, because as we go through the process, we find that, that some of it goes deeper than we knew, so we are working diligently to get these all caught up and approved and generated and on the posted on the site.
So, Kate, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Can you give us an estimate, like, 80% done, or 50%?
Well, I, I mean, for most of this year are caught up, we just, the September 13th was a very long meeting, so that's still being worked on. Minutes that we thought were published were not, but other than that, we should be caught up, but then we discovered some minutes from last year that are still missing. So, like I said, myself, the town, and the town clerk and assistant town clerk have gone through everything and identified the ones that are still missing, so we can have gone through everything and identified the ones that are still missing, so we can have the Recording Secretary work in getting those generated-
Thank you so much.
-and then getting them to us. She does it, only part-time, she does it 4.5 hours a week, so, we're working on that, and with the new administrative assistants that we've interviewed or that are coming on board, we've made it clear that minutes is a top priority due to statutory, minutes are expected to be generated, basically right after the meeting, given to the boards, the next meeting to be approved, and then posted within 30 days. So, going forward, this is the plan we are going to implement for all new administrative assistants, so that we don't fall into this problem again. I wish I could give you a timeframe, we're still trying to identify other missing minutes, like I said, unfortunately, it goes deeper than we knew, but going into it more and more, we're slowly identifying them and getting them before the Recording Secretary, so we can get them issued, generated.
At a point where you feel comfortable that you've figured out what's going on and what is missing, is it possible for you to give us a little update of, like, here's the minutes we're working on, and-
I could certainly give that to you at the next meeting, absolutely.
All right, great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great, all right, perfect, thank you. With that being said, I am looking for a motion to enter into executive session.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yep.
There's something that has come up within the last 48 hours-
Okay.
... which I know you were not aware of, but it's usually on the agenda, and with Town Council, it doesn't have to be on the agenda, as long as we know that this has come up. And what I'd like to bring up, and it's only gonna take a minute, is the use of Eventbrite, the 200th Committee has been using it since its exception, since we began, I think, Laura, you knew that, right? Well, what I'm gonna ask the board is, I would like to make a motion to use Eventbrite for all committees and commissions in town for any fundraises or events that they have. It's just another way of everything having to go through Eventbrite, where there's no cash involved, and that they'll be able to use it, and it makes collecting or, you know, selling the tickets, you know, for one thing, the gala, which is gonna be the last event by the 200th Committee, it just makes things a lot easier if the commission or committee chooses to use Eventbrite.
All right, and-
And the reason it just came up is, I talked to Todd two weeks ago about it, and then today, person to person with Jeanne Sullivan, Treasurer, I spoke with her about it at 3:00, and she was fine with it.
But I'm, I'm just wondering, like, why do we need to require everybody to, I use it, I love it, it's great to try.
I'm not requiring, I just want-
Do you want approval for that event?
For any event that-
You just want to open up this resource to community, uh, committees?
Right, that if they decide to use it.
Oh, that they're okay to use it?
Yeah, I mean, now that COVID will basically be over, I mean, I'm looking forward to the library trivia night and all of that, and it will make it easier in the future, where there actually is no cash, you know, passing.
All right, so moved, so I, so-
Second.
We are okay with everybody using Eventbrite if they want to use it?
Yeah, just, just connect, connect with the Treasurer-
Yes.
-before doing so, and just make sure we're doing everything proper.
Yep.
All right, so I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor? Five oh? All right, thank you. So, I'm looking for a motion to enter into executive session, not to return, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open body may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares to wit the clerical union, and we removed a Town Administrator from the older agenda. Okay, so moved, do I have a second? A roll call vote, Mr. Weeks?
Aye.
Ms. Kement, myself, aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye, and the only other comment I want to make is Thursday is Veterans Day, obviously that's why I'm wearing the hat, thank a vet.
Thank you very much.